All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Mayor Noam?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, number three, we have no ceremonial matters. Closed session report, City Attorney Abrahimi.
Thank you. Good evening. The council did meet in closed session tonight. There was no public comment before adjourning into closed session. The council provided direction on items one and three. There was no reportable action on item two.
Thank you. We'll move to number five, adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Move to 6.1, brief comments by the City Council. We will start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I attended the Sugar Skull Art Walk Dia de los Muertos event, and it was very heavily attended. Definitely, the street closure was a necessity for how many people we had out there on the street that night, and really great community event. I also attended the Arts and Culture Gala. Do they call it a gala? I'm not sure what they call it. Little event. And then obviously Pierre's Retirement Party. So, a couple of different events that I've been at in the last week.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Clarici?
I left town. I have nothing to say.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Yeah, my wife and I, actually, we had the joy of handing out candy until we ran out, I think somewhere around 700 kids. We ran out of candy, and they were still lined up for Halloween. And then I too attended Pierre's fantastic shindig for his retirement party, so we had a good time there. And that was it for me for the week.
Thank you. Councilmember Saragosa?
Yes, I also attended Sugar Skull. It was a great event. It was a lot of fun. I would like to thank all the volunteers and city staff for their work on that. And then also attended the 40th Anniversary Arts and Culture Event, which I understand they had successful events, so, you know, raising funds towards the restoration of Old City Hall and Immigrant James. So, I was really happy to see that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I also went to the Sugar Skull event. Great event. You guys have already covered that, Pierre's party. I also went to the Veterans Day event, and it rained for the first time in 20 years. And so Supervisor Thomas quickly got us into the Board of Supervisors, flooding out into the hallways, but still a great event, and they really pulled it together. So, always fun. If you have never been, I highly recommend you go. Okay, we will move to number seven, consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item 7.5.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we will open the consent calendar for public comment.
Sue Rodman, my item that I'd like to make comments on is 7.8 for the clarifier. And I'd like to congratulate our our engineering department and the people at Public Works that work at that facility. And I am glad to see that we are keeping up with it. I'd like to also say that in keeping up with the treatment plant, we need to be sure that we don't neglect the upstream infrastructure that feeds into that plant, because we know if that goes bad, we have problems at the plant, too.
Thank you. Is that microphone working? Can everybody hear that? It feels like that microphone's not working.
Working now.
Just not as loud. Okay. Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments on the consent calendar besides 7.5? Seeing none, we will bring it back to council for motion.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Noam?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we are on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City Council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserved the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Barely?
I think she's getting picked up.
Okay, well, anyway, Sue Rodman. And my issue is Broadway. And it's turning out really nice. I was up there, and I said, wow, one improvement over a month or month and a half. So, congratulations to our engineers and to our contractors. And it's really looking nice.
Thank you. That is an exciting project to get done. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. You okay there, Vice Mayor?
I went a little crazy.
Okay. All right. We will do 7.5. Subject: Consider adoption of an ordinance to amend the text of the City of Placerville City Ordinance, adding Chapter 30 Tobacco Retailers to Title V Business Regulations to regulate retail of tobacco products and to establish a tobacco retail licensing program and find the action is not a project within the means of the Public Resources Code 21065 and SEQA Guidelines Section 15378 and not subject to environmental law. Mr. Ibas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On October the 22nd of this year, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 9371, which is included as attachment B to your staff report. And that resolution was basically the council make finding that well-established negative impacts of health effects of tobacco use. The council also introduced and waived the first reading of Tobacco Retail Ordinance, which is included as attachment A and also finding it's not subject to SEQA. Staff, as of late, and I think all these came in within the last day or so, we received nine email comments from the public. And all of these comments are pertaining to, on page seven of the draft ordinance, if you want to turn to that section, it would be on page seven. This is Section 5-30-6 regarding tobacco product pricing and packaging. This is Section E, which provides for minimum prices for cigarettes, little cigars, and cigars. And no tobacco retailer shall sell to a consumer, and then it has a number of price limitations. The council needs to understand that this is identical to what's proposed by El Dorado County. And so I think it's important that the city maintain the same standards as the county, so there isn't a difference between shopping in the county versus the city for tobacco products. Again, I want to reference that adopted resolution. The purpose of the resolution was to identify all the supporting documents, all the supporting studies that would support each of the sections of this proposed ordinance, including this particular section. And I want to let the council know, too, that we have Conzi Moot, and we also have Kristin Tornancasa of the County Public Health Department. And they're here to also address any specific questions the council may have regarding this particular section of the ordinance. Staff is recommending that you adopt the ordinance as presented. That concludes staff's report.
Great. Just for clarification, the county did already adopt this, correct?
The county did already adopt the ordinance.
Thank you.
And there was no opposition, is my understanding, with the county's ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Okay, questions and comments from council?
I do. Thank you. And thank you, Pierre. I appreciate that. And thank you for zeroing in. And I did pull it for a couple of reasons. I mean, one, we did get all these, we got a lot of comments in today, unfortunately, last, at the end. But I'm glad they did come in, because, and I will admit when I make a mistake, and this section E, I did not catch it when we first were looking at it. I guess my, it's not really a question, because I understand the motivation behind the reasoning for the minimum prices, I guess. But as far as I know, I mean, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we set minimum prices for alcohol or for marijuana. I'm just wondering why we're setting minimum standards for what somebody can charge for tobacco, a legal product. I mean, I get regulation, I mean, we regulate a lot of different things, right? We regulate a lot of things. We have ABCs to regulate alcohol. And so I don't have a problem with the regulation. I think that's wise, and there's been some issues with other products that maybe have entered into the consumer stream that are outside of what maybe a tobacco establishment should sell. But philosophically, I have a real problem with setting what somebody can sell something. Like, I'm all for if the state tax or a local tax is $2.52, or whatever it might be. That's great. Like, render onto Caesar what is Caesar's, right? But I have a problem with saying, you have to, Mr. Tobacco Salesman, you can't sell a pack of cigarettes for less than $10. I don't know what a pack of cigarettes costs, but I have a real hard time saying that. I'm gonna, and I'm not even sure what the baseline is, but I'm saying an arbitrary amount what somebody could sell. I just have a philosophical problem with that. And I apologize to my council colleagues, because I should have caught this on the first go-around for myself. But I just, I can't support this with that minimum standard in it. I would be comfortable supporting this, taking that section out. And I get that we would be in conflict, but I just think, I just don't understand how we would pick an amount on something that we don't do for any other product that what I would, you know, consider like a sin thing, like alcohol or marijuana. So, happy to have a conversation about it, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. And I'm also interested if the public has any, you know, thoughts on that as well.
Okay, we'll open it to public comment in a minute. I want to give my fellow council members a chance to weigh in.
I'm also in favor of removing that section. I mean, I understand it would be in conflict with the county, but I do think, I mean, I like free market enterprise. Everybody knows that at this point. That was my whole concern with this whole thing to begin with. And I think regulating somebody's specific price point on a product goes against that ideology. So, yeah.
Well, okay, I think the challenge here is that, yes, I agree with you. I don't want to particularly spend any time picking a price. The problem, the challenge, and I'm assuming our good friends there might have an answer for this and why this is necessary is, I mean, if you're trying to, if you, I, I mean, you're in for a dime, in for a dollar here. We are trying to, well, we're trying to come up with some regulations with a business that has been unregulated. One of the reasons why you don't do this for alcohol is alcohol is already heavily regulated. How many you have, how many licenses to sit out there. And as far as I know, the county has not set a price for beer. And if they did, then we might want to set a price for beer, but they haven't done that. So, the market part of this is just flowing back and forth. Once the county decided to get this $10 thing in there, what are we trying to accomplish? Well, if you're trying to accomplish some sort of regulation, and then presumably, I mean, we're mostly concerned with kids, but some sort of behavior modification. All that'll happen is that folks will just come in the city to buy cheap cigarettes, which honestly, from our, there's sales tax on sale of cigarettes, correct? Oh, yeah. I mean, we should want that to be the case. I mean, honestly, we should want them. This is for all the people that thought this was some sort of money grab on the part of the city. You should read the whole agenda item first. We should want that, but we're trying not to have that flood of people coming into the city and buy stuff, you know? That's my feeling about it. I have, I mean, I don't smoke. I am a civil libertarian, and I believe in that kind of stuff. But in this case, I'd be willing to put my virtues aside.
I'm kind of in that camp, too, and the fact that it's unfortunate, but it's the irresponsible behavior that's happening on behalf of the tobacco retailers that's bringing this all forward in the first place. And if they weren't selling to underage kids, we might not be having this conversation, but they are. And so I think the $10 discourages the kids from picking up a habit that's expensive. You know, as one of those emails noted, well, I already just go down to Red Hawk. Well, Red Hawk's a great partner, and, you know, if everyone wants to go down to Red Hawk and buy them, I'm okay with that, if it keeps it out of the hands of our kids. You can also go into their casino and probably smoke it inside there, where you can't do that in the city also. Great. You know, I think my focus on this is really looking at protecting our youth, whereas the tobacco retailers are not responsible in being a partner with us in that. That's kind of where I stand on that. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, yeah, because I saw some of these emails this morning, too, and basically I jumped online and started looking at wholesale costs compared to the taxes that we have in the state and what's required and whatnot. Honestly, the prices that they have here are well under market value anyway. So, we're not really setting a price that the retailers have. I mean, yes, we're setting a price the retailers have to sell them at. They're going to sell them for way more than this already to begin with. So, I'm not too worried about the price being set, because come capitalism and free market, trust me, they're making their money on this, because they're selling them for more than what we're basically stating here. Just to get that out there, I kind of wanted to figure out, all right, are we asking too much? Now, technically, we're not even asking enough. So, as far as I'm concerned, we can leave it in, because I don't think it's really going to hurt the retailers by any means, unfortunately. I love that, you know, I mean, this, the, the, basically, you know, trying to keep our youth from buying this stuff, considering the cost of inflation and what everything costs these days, anyway. I mean, if a kid's going to get a hold of $10 to buy a cigar, the kid's going to get a hold of $10 to buy a cigar. I mean, one way or another, they're going to try and get a hold of it. This is a great way to try and help stop it if they are increasing the price. Personally, I think we should leave it in, just for that reason.
All right, thank you. Public health, do you want to make a comment on that?
There is a CPI in there, too, though, so that price will continue to increase.
Good evening, Kristin Becker. Placerville resident, as well as I work for El Dorado County Public Health. I'm looking at the summary of findings, which are included in the ordinance, but I just wanted to highlight some of the key findings regarding minimum price, because I know that came up quite a bit in the public comment. I just want to share some important facts. So, tobacco companies spend considerably to decrease the price of their products in order to counter state and local tobacco control efforts, appeal to price-sensitive customers, and increase demand for tobacco products. For example, tobacco companies spent the majority of their cigarette marketing budgets on price discounts, accounting for nearly 6.2 billion of the 8.6 billion advertising and promotional expenditures in 2018. So, commercial tobacco spends considerably on discounting their products, because they know if they can get their products in the hands of consumers, the products are highly addictive. They're as addictive as heroin. So, once you can get consumers initiated and hooked on it, they know that's a winning strategy. Other just important facts on minimum price. The availability of inexpensive tobacco products leads to increased tobacco use, as evidenced by more than 100 academic studies that conclusively show that when tobacco products are made more expensive, fewer people use tobacco, fewer initiate tobacco use, and more people quit tobacco. Research has also consistently shown the increases in cigarette prices will result in less smoking across various populations. A minimum price and pack size for all tobacco products will discourage youth initiation. And youth are particularly responsive to changes in tobacco prices. And evidence suggests that tobacco companies deliberately target youth with price reductions. And I'd just like to leave you with, given the number of middle and high school students that use tobacco products, sustained efforts to prevent initiation of tobacco product use among our young persons is key, is a key strategy. So, thank you very much, and we are here to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, we will open 7.5 for public comment now.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, the comments that were mentioned tonight, the copies of those are on the back table for the public if they would like to inspect. And also, they're posted to the city's website.
Thank you.
I'll go first. Ryan Carter, speaking tonight only as a concerned citizen, no other role. I stopped into a tobacco retailer on the way to the meeting tonight to grab a soda. Cigarettes are less than $10 a pack advertised price at this local retailer, so we are increasing their prices. I also asked the proprietor of this tobacco retailer if he had any idea this was happening. He did not. My first question is, did the city make any effort to contact tobacco retailers to solicit comments or to be involved in the process of enforcing this ordinance? Because they have no idea what's coming. My second question is, how does the city, especially with the CPI, this minimum price is going to change based on the CPI every year? And it's going to be cumulative. And so next year, the price of cigarettes is going to be $10.37 or something crazy. How is the city going to communicate every single year the new price that they are forced to charge? And how are they, because if they don't charge that, it's a violation. They get fined. If they do four violations, they lose their license. So, this is part of this whole licensing process, is complying with these price controls, which I find abhorrent, just on the surface. I agree with Councilman Saragosa and Gottberg on that. But my question is mainly for the businesses, because you are affecting their ability to do business. To my knowledge, the two retailers I spoke to had no idea this was happening. So, has the city notified them? And then how do you plan on moving forward? Letting them know the minute annual price increase is that they're going to be forced to charge for tobacco moving forward. Thank you.
Ryan, I have one question for you. So, you said you talked to a couple of the retailers. Were either of those the retailers who are not following the laws?
I don't know, because I didn't, I'm not aware of who's under code enforcement for tobacco. I just stopped into the first one. I drove by.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Michael Drobish, Placerville. I'm opposed to the price controls in here. I'm basically opposed to the controls themselves, aside from maybe requiring a separate license for tobacco retailers. And Mr. Clarici, you can't say my, what did you say, your freedom, your position?
I said, I said that, we're not supposed to get in a dialogue here, but since I'm being quoted. I said that I'm basically generally against these kinds of things, but in this case, I see a benefit, and therefore, I am in favor of this. That's my Reader's Digest version.
Yes, and so, like, El Dorado County Health and a lot of other supporters of this are saying it's for the children. Well, forgive me, it's already illegal, right? So, what you're doing is you're punishing adults making choices. So, is that, you know, I didn't, if I wanted Bay Area values controlling my life, I'd live in the Bay Area. I live here for freedom. So, I don't like the price controls. I just don't like this at all. And I see the way it's written is so many retailers are going to mess up every year trying to get their license. They're going to forget, and I think it's planned. It's quietly not said. That's how you're going to dispense of so many tobacco retailers in the city is under this, because they have to file every 11 months to get one month of the city overlooking their plans. It's a full-on assault on tobacco, and you seem to be making marijuana just easy breezy. So, I don't like it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Constance Mout from Public Health, County of El Dorado. Just a comment on what I perceive the goal to be is that we do want to see and help the retailers to be compliant, and we do intend to provide education to them. And there will be, you know, when price increases, at least at the county side. I know that what we will do is post what the increase is, and it will be available to retailers to easily find. We plan to visit all of the retailers and, you know, inform them of passage when, for the county ordinance, and would do the same for the city if requested. So, I think that we are going to do everything we can to try to help them comply.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I personally do not like smoking, so I'm not invested in this. But my concern is that if your primary objective is keeping this product out of the hands of juveniles, I don't see how the price increases is going to correlate with that objective. That's one concern. I just don't see it. And the other concern is, I just remember months ago, the chief was reporting about, an operation was done with, I don't remember, it was the state or who, but they did a massive undercover project and found a number of operators doing illegal things in terms of who they were selling the product to, what kind of products they were selling, things that kind. And that seems like a very effective tool to use where we already have the resource. That's why, that would be my concern about this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will bring this back to the council. Does staff have anything to add in regard to the questions? I think it was answered.
The staff doesn't have anything to add unless there's any more specific questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. And I think, I'd just like to make this comment. We discovered all those things that retailers were doing, but we didn't have any, anything we could do about it. It was basically, don't do that again. And so I think we're trying to put more bite to stop what they're doing, because they're not following the rules, and they don't seem to care to follow the rules. And so this is what we're doing to try to make them follow the rules. Okay, any further discussion?
I'll just add, you know, I think that's, I think that's why we're doing the ordinance, is because there's been behavior that's not consistent with what we want as a community and what the law says currently, right? I mean, we, the state of California, local governments, Prop 56, we collect tens and tens of mil, it's about 700, 800 million dollars a year. Prop 56 dollars that we've now reallocated into, basically go into medical rates to keep those rates at a certain level. Those were fights over the last few years. Actually, Western Dental was a client, so I fought for these, to keep those Prop 56 dollars to go to medical use. So, I mean, there's, there is a, there's a substantial amount of money that tobacco users are paying for the privilege of using tobacco. The price control is really a cessation tactic, right? I mean, it's not because people were bad actors. It's because we want people to stop smoking. That's fine. That's a public policy choice as well. I still go back to my thing of, I don't charge people extra for a Big Mac, because I think they're going to get heart attack or arteries clogged. If people want to drink two cases of Budweiser, you know, we, you know, people buy what they want to buy. Or if they want to go buy $500 worth of marijuana right now, they can do that without us saying, you guys charge $25 for a marijuana packet, whatever. I'm not sure how it comes, but whatever it might be. I don't, I'm pretty sure that there's not a minimum cost.
We used to call it a "lit."
Yeah, so I just, the inconsistency of that really sits ill with me. Like I said, and I blame myself, because I didn't catch this before. I would have had this conversation a long time ago. So, again, I apologize to my colleagues on that. I just can't get there with that in there. I think the regulation is needed and necessary. I don't like the minimum standard cost, because markets change as well. Like, tobacco costs could come down dramatically for some reason. So, I have, I have a real problem with setting that and dictating what somebody can charge for their product. So, I won't be supporting this today, but I just wanted to get my thoughts out there. Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of like, I didn't realize this, because I didn't catch that part in here either
here either, when I was researching the prices, but the CPI part, so for Michael, you know, bringing that up, and then Mr. Carter also bringing that up. So my question, actually, this can direct to staff, is there somewhere in here where we are telling them that, hey, the prices are going up, or they're just going to have to know this when they get the license and keep track of it on their own?
It would be part of their licensing program.
Yeah, okay, so they would have to keep track of it on their own. We won't be giving them a notification each year.
Wouldn't it be part of the licensing, because they're going to do this every year? So when they come in for their license, they'll say, oh, now the number is this. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to get that part understood. I wasn't quite sure, because I just wanted to see, I mean, are we investing staff time of them having, staff having to send out notices going, oh, by the way, don't forget to raise your prices? So, okay.
Yeah, I guess, I just feel less sorry for them, because, because they're not following the rules, they're forcing us to pay more for enforcement that's not coming from anywhere. So, you know, if we want to talk about the costs, they're imposing a cost on all the taxpayers to keep them good players. I mean, it's a choice they're making.
So the licensing itself, I mean, because we're going to charge them for that.
Presumably.
Presumably. The licensing itself is now giving them fair warning. So if they are not, you know, operating in good faith, then now we have fines and fees and, you know, losing the license, and then you lose your business. At this point, I don't know if it, you know, with that in mind, I don't know if it's necessary that we have to have the, the cost in there. I mean, we could do without it and still give good enforcement with this ordinance just by removing that small part, because at that point in time, you know, now we're making them responsible for acting the way they're supposed to, without just getting a slap on the wrist.
Our police officers still have to go in there and do their special investigations, and that's not covered under those licensing costs, to my understanding.
They're still going to have to do that, whether they're charging the $10 or not. I mean, we're still going to end up with that.
Well, you're also punishing the end user as well as the establishment, so it's not just the establishment. That price obviously gets passed on to the consumer buying it.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, I'm obviously said I'm okay with licensing as a means by which to code enforcement against bad actors. I know I said that in our last meeting, but I don't think that removing Section E on Page 7 related to cost restrictions in any way limits that ability to deal with bad actors through licensing with code enforcement. It's really a section that is tied to trying to prevent people, adults primarily, from smoking, is how I see it. So I don't know, I have a problem with that. I mean, I've had, I keep saying that on this item over and over again, and I still have the same issue that I have had all along, so.
Our city manager had something to add.
I tried to get some information today, and I, hopefully I can put the county on the spot. Have you established your, what your licensing fee will be approximately? Can you tell us what the, come to the mic, please, is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah. That was a question I had.
I believe it was established that three hours of work at, I believe, $171 an hour, so if my memory and math is correct, I think it was $513 is the annual TRL fee for the county, and that accompanied the ordinance that passed on November 5th.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because of the fact that it's been compared a lot to the marijuana, et cetera. Want to let you know, we charge $26,000 a year for licensing our marijuana, approximately, isn't that right, Dave? $26,000 for licensing our marijuana in this, to retail shops. So if you compare that $500 to $26,000, in a way, that's a price control also, that they have to recover in the marijuana. Right, and when I, when I, when my role into, you know, if I go to the Smoke Shop on Broadway, my guess is there won't be an armed guard sitting out there checking my license and asking me to do stuff. This idea is absurd, that we treat the two the same, because we run those marijuana dispensaries through the wringer. And, 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 you know what? I have an idea. Why don't we make it $10, and we take the $3, that's the difference, and we put it into a community fund, because that's what those marijuana people, I mean, if we're going to bring out the marijuana thing, then let's bring it out. We tax them extra, which they pay glad, well, I don't know, gladly is probably not the right word, I'm sorry if you're listening. And we take that money and we do good deeds with it. And now, all of a sudden, wanting to charge $10 for a pack of cigarettes, which is kind of like trying to do a good deed, is rankling things. And I'm sorry, cigarette smokers have been put to it for a long time now. When they started jacking up the taxes and jacking up the fees and everything else, it's the cost of doing business. And I'm concerned about having the cross-jurisdictional differences in the price. There's a, there's, to me, because, so, okay, so what if they start selling packs of cigarettes for $3? Yeah, what if they start doing it for $3?
I think the taxes.
Not just that, but I'm sorry, we're talking hypotheticals now. What if they went to like $3? So we'll lose money selling cigarettes to people. That would be a business decision. I think we need to, I think we need this.
An unlikely one, but.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Most of the people that wrote into us will pay $10.
The final thing I just wanted to mention is, if you, in quarts of motion moving this forward, if you decide to pull that language out, our city attorney has informed me that we will need to redo the, to go back to a first reading, et cetera, and take it through the process. So, just for your information, whatever you decide to do.
Just last hypothetical, if we were going to take those $3 and put them somewhere, I'd love to see it in picking up all those cigarette butts on Main Street, in our parks and everywhere else, because that's another cost we pay for those cigarette users.
Well, I'll just throw out, I'll, I'll put forward a motion to adopt the ordinance, but without Section E on Page 7 of the current ordinance, that would be recirculated as a first ordinance at the next possible meeting, or whatever it could be for staff.
Let me, let me correct. This, if you pull that out, this can, tonight can serve as the first reading of the ordinance. Correct?
It's not really the first reading, but as long as you make a change tonight that's approved, we're going to bring it back for second reading. So you're not going to approve it, you're going to direct staff to make the change, and then we're going to bring it back.
For the second reading, okay.
That's what would be my motion then.
All second.
We have a first and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, that moves us to Item 10, ordinances, we have none. And to 11, public hearings, 11.1, consideration of an appeal filed by Dana LeBlanc of a fine, third administrative fine levied on 385 Main Street for failure to respond to notice to correct, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This appeal is solely an appeal of the third administrative fine in the amount of $500, which was a timely appeal. This is not an appeal of the violation, nor the first $100 fine, or the second $200 administrative fine. To give a little history, on August 17th of 2017, the previous business owner received approval from the Planning Commission for temporary use permit allowing for an outdoor seating area at 3 to 5 Main, which at that time was the Centro Cafe or Centro Coffee House. Following a change in, in the business, the owner of Sour Dough &amp; Company, Mr. LeBlanc, received approval of a temporary sidewalk dining permit from, directly from staff on July 27th of 2020. This permit was issued under the temporary program to assist certain businesses and eateries during the COVID-19 indoor restrictions. The use approved remained valid until that program was ended on July 25th of 2022 by the council. Subsequent to January of 2022, staff had personally met with Mr. LeBlanc that a temporary use permit would be required to continue the outdoor dining, and we provided him with a copy of the outdoor dining permit application previously approved for Centro Cafe. Mr. LeBlanc was personally notified by staff on several occasions about the need to obtain a special temporary use permit to continue the sidewalk dining. Staff provided him with a copy of the Centro TUP as a template for the completion of his application. After not receiving an application for a year and a half later, a notice to correct was sent to Mr. LeBlanc on November 8th of 2023. Subsequently, a first, second, and then a third administrative violations letters were subsequently sent to Mr. LeBlanc for the failure to submit a temporary use permit application. Prior to the third administrative letter being sent, staff again personally met with Mr. LeBlanc, again providing him with a copy of the outdoor dining permit that was submitted by Centro Cafe. As detailed in Attachment 2, the business owner is being cited for maintaining an outdoor dining area without a temporary use permit or an encroachment permit. Other issues include installation of exterior lighting without approval by the Planning Commission is required, the outdoor seating configuration that relegates pedestrians to walk in between tables and chairs, and the failure to remove personal abandoned planer boxes located within the bulb, bulb out after numerous urgings by staff to remove them. Pictures of that is included in Attachment 3 in your staff report. The third administrative fine of $500 was sent certified letter on October 2nd of 2024, with a deadline of October 14th to file an appeal. Mr. LeBlanc did come in to Development Services Office and submitted a temporary use permit application on October 10th. He stated that he had moved and did not receive the third administrative letter violation and would appeal the associated third administrative fine. The timely appeal was filed with the city clerk within the 10-day appeal period, and that is included in your staff report. The first $100 and second are not timely, not subject to this appeal, as I already mentioned. Mr. LeBlanc's reason is he had moved, and he has a new address. Code Section 1-4B-1 allows the city to recover any all expenses of abatement. Total staff time spent on this particular code case is significant. As a note, all expenses are to be covered by the fines that we receive. And with, and that would include pursuing the code enforcement, including staff site inspections, preparation of notices and mailings. So staff has prepared, again, a detailed letter or listing of all that we have done. It's in Attachment 2 on this particular case. Staff is recommending denial of the appeal, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Do we have questions from the council? No? Okay, we'll invite Mr. LeBlanc up to.
My name is Dana LeBlanc, owner of Sour Dough &amp; Co. downtown Placerville here, thank you. We'll make some generalized comments about what I'm experiencing in my dealings with the city, and then I'll present my case here as well. So in my generalized comments, of course, I'm out talking to all the business owners on a regular basis. Many of us are struggling to do business in this community, as you're seeing downtown that's closing up quite a few businesses regularly, and I'll probably be the next. So, not real happy with some of the things that I'm seeing around the community. That doesn't mean I'm not responsible for taking care of the things that I need to take care of, and I'll address those. But the city does need to hear that. The city needs to hear what business owners are experiencing, not only from legislation that's happening in the state. As an example of that, the illustrious governor just set our minimum wage for $20 an hour. For a small town like Placerville, and the employee base I have and the amount of business I do, that's killing me. So that, and amongst many other things, which the governor is denying right now, we're putting businesses out of business. A case in point is one of the big restaurant chains that's closed 60-some stores. Multiple friends of mine are closing stores throughout Sacramento, so we're all experiencing this, we're in this together, how can we work together? So that's just food for thought. I have very creative ideas about what might be helpful downtown. Hopefully they don't fall on deaf ears, and hopefully I can meet with you at a separate time to discuss those things. To address this particular case, we're just addressing the last fine. So I've submitted, I will have you guys look at this. This is a letter from the post office showing my change of address as July 31st. Did not receive any of those mailings, and I had, I'm almost 70 years old, and I took the first vacations in almost 20-some years this year. Happened to happen these times when these filings came about and these letters and notifications came through. So that said, July 31st was a request by the post office, there's a case filed here right here, you can see it. September 30th was when the post office started sending me mail, two months later. Both of your filings are in there. You'll see both of these here, and I'll present them, with the dates on them. So neither the second nor the third notice got to me till well into October, when I returned from Mexico. So, three days after I received the envelope from the post office, I opened it and I saw the letter saying that I was in violation. And within three days, I completed all the necessary documentation and filed it with the city, made all the corrections, as we probably could approve, and have made my filings. So if anybody would like to see this information, it's all there, available to you. Can I present?
Yeah, you can have more time if you need.
So really, all I'm requesting here is that we just waive the $500 last fee, because I never even received notification in time to react to it. So that, that part's fairly clear. So just a final note is, I really do want us all to work together, and I really do fear what's happening, not only in the business side of this, but in the support and the, what we're doing in the community. For instance, the events and the street closures have been a real, real challenge for us out here.
Okay, we need to stay on topic.
Okay, we'll stay on topic. So I just want to throw a couple comments in. So go ahead and review, and just let me know your findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will open this for public comment.
Kirk Smith, you're at an advantage, because I don't have my hernias in, they're not charged. So, but I'll tell you the thing that I'm responsive to, is what I heard the merchant describe about the notice issue, and that's very significant, because I do have personal experience with that subject in these proceedings. Second area of concern is when you discuss the economic impact of merchants in this community, they're hurting. As you probably have noticed, a lot of businesses keep closing. There's one merchant who reports that from the conversations she's had, you can expect about six more by the end of the year, because Christmas is a big season, if you don't make it, you're going to go under. So that's one of the reasons why, just for nothing else, I'd ask you to get rid of it. But from my own experience, I still have tremendous displeasure that exceeds what you just heard regarding an issue of notice. Someone says it didn't get noticed. I know in my own experience, you were told that the notice came in the mail, that you count putting it in the mail just because you, you put it in the mail without regard to return receipt requested. So, I last month sold all my last interest in commercial property in town. I've divested all of that interest, because I just don't want to deal with this kind of thing that you've heard. It's a story I've heard and you've heard a long time. That's why I support getting rid of the fines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Margaret Kuhn, a citizen, former council member. I hadn't prepared, I wasn't prepared to speak on this, but I do have history with it from having been on the council, and I do recall the times where Mr. LeBlanc's business was the fear that it was going to destroy all of Main Street from some of the same merchants that have come and gone. And I very much would hate to see him go, I think it's a very good thing. I know one thing that I always hated was folks coming up and, you know, what are you going to do about Governor Newsom's $20 minimum wage? Nothing. Can you stop the businesses that are, unfortunately, as Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Smith have mentioned, are probably going to go? Nothing. I don't, I hate to see you folks bear that brunt. It's not fair. You had nothing to do with it, but yet you are the face that folks can come and see. I can't get in and see the governor, but I can come down and see my city council members. So I would ask you to maybe consider waiving the fee if Mr. LeBlanc could respond to fixing up his condition use permit. I have seen people have to walk out in the street when Main Street's busy, because he's been busy. And so if you got the, the And so if you got the... I personally love sidewalk dining. My first option anytime I go visit the town or I go downtown. So hopefully, you can, folks can do the right thing there and help him as best you can, assuming that he will bring his, you know, his outdoor use into compliance. And again, it seems odd that we hear him on the verge of having closed, which is extremely unfortunate. But yet, that same location, oh my goodness, there was quite an uproar over that business was going to open and historic Main Street was going to close. So, and here we are this evening. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will bring this back to the council for discussion.
Sure, what the heck. When we got together for our agenda prep today, just the two of us, by the way, I was, because I have been down this road a few times in different kinds of circumstances. And here's what you hear. Not speaking to this particular situation specifically. When times are good, the city can't enforce any of its rules because times are good. And you wouldn't want to do anything to upset the cosmic things that are going on on Main Street because times are good, and who would want to mess that up? And then same issue. Oh, times are bad. People are struggling. And I'm not making fun of that. People are, times are tough on Main Street, and people are struggling. I've lived here for 40-something years. I've seen this before. So you can't enforce your rules when times are tough because, well, that would be cruel. So basically, what you're told is your rules mean nothing because you cannot enforce them irrespective of what's going on in the economy. We've had this general trend because we've had this on a couple of signs and a couple of other issues where folks come in, several people have come in and said, well, I didn't get the final notice. Fair enough. But it's not like you didn't know what was going on. It wasn't like you didn't know that this process is going on. And we've had this happen with a couple of people. You know, they know what's happening. And even if they're sick, or they leave town, or they move or whatever, it doesn't mean that whatever process is going on just stops. I ran afoul of the IRS decades ago. And just because I wanted to ignore what they were telling me, it didn't stop the process. So when I got the final process that was rather intimidating, I finally said, well, I've got to deal with this. Anyway, those are my wandering thoughts right now. It seems like we have a situation where the person knew what the city's situation was. Staff worked with them to try to ameliorate the situation, and we end up here. Yeah, yes. Anyway, I'm done.
Do we have anyone else?
I mean, I would say something similar stood out to me that, you know, obviously, as of November 2023, he met with staff. He knew this was an issue before any fines started at all, and then also received the first notice. So it wasn't like this is the first communication we sent out on this issue with the means by which to correct it and what needed to be done. I mean, this has been going on over a year now since that was originally started.
Okay, nothing else to add? Does someone have a motion?
I'll move staff's recommended position.
I'll second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Noe?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 12.1. Consider appropriating $400,000 from the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fund for the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project, CIP 40617, and approving Amendment Number 6 and issuance of Notice to Proceed Number 7, which both total $365,000, $483,019 with DUBERY Engineering's for said project. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor Noe, and city council members. The item before you this evening recommends approval of a budget appropriation and approval of Amendment Number 6 to the agreement for engineering services with DUBERY Engineers for the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project. As you know, this project has been around for a long time. In 2006, the city received approval for the project to be included in the Federal Highway Bridge Program for a full bridge replacement based on the bridge inspection report, which notes the structural integrity and the functionality of the bridge. In 2015, city council approved an agreement for engineering services with DUBERY to complete the engineering design services, NEPA environmental documentation, and bid document preparation. Since then, the city council approved five amendments to the agreement for engineering services based on additional consulting services that were needed to complete the project. In April of 2023, Amendment Number 5 was approved, which included services for DUBERY Engineers to take over and prepare the SEQA environmental impact report. At that time, the project did not have sufficient funding to authorize the amendment or the environmental phase work in its entirety. Staff submitted a scope change cost adjustment to the Highway Bridge Program to cover the cost increases associated with completing the environmental phase as well as anticipated costs for final design right-of-way and construction. While the funding request was under review on June 21st, 2023, the Caltrans HBP manager approved moving available funding from the final design phase to the preliminary engineering phase to keep the project moving along without delay. Subsequently, DUBERY was authorized to complete all environmental and SEQA tasks. In the last few years, the Highway Bridge Program has undergone extensive revisions to their policies and procedures to mitigate the lack of available funds to deliver the program. As a result, additional approvals are now required from various Caltrans divisions to move an HBP-funded project forward. In January 2024, city staff received a response from the Highway Bridge Program stating that they could not approve the additional funding request until the type selection report was first approved by Caltrans. From January 2024 until now, staff proceeded with the environmental tasks covered under DUBERY Engineers' current agreement, including circulation of the draft EIR and preparing the response to EIR comments that were received. Staff and the consultant team also began to assess the steps needed to complete the type selection report for the bridge. In July of 2024, DUBERY Engineers' environmental staff, while working on a separate city project, discovered a previously undocumented cultural resource in Hangtown Creek. The resource was determined to be located within the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project area of potential effects boundary. DUBERY Engineers notified the city and consulted with Caltrans about the appropriate steps to take to include this resource in the project's environmental documentation. Additionally, since the EIR was prepared, the foothill yellow-legged frog has recently been listed as a threatened federal species. And now this means that any project that has not yet received environmental clearance from NEPA will need to perform additional surveys. For this project, DUBERY Engineers must perform the surveys, document the findings, and update the EIR and EA FONZI with any additional analyses and considerations related to the foothill yellow-legged frog. Based on all of this new information, the proposed Amendment Number 6 to DUBERY's contract includes additional out-of-scope tasks for them to complete the bridge type selection report, additional environmental studies and modifications to the environmental documents related to cultural resource discovery, and the completion of the foothill yellow-legged frog surveys and summary report. Staff is recommending approval of Amendment Number 6 and issuance of NTP Notice to Proceed Number 7 with DUBERY Engineers. Following the completion of the bridge type selection report, staff will resubmit the scope change cost adjustment to Caltrans HBP for the additional environmental phase, final design and right-of-way phase, and construction phase cost increases. It is anticipated that all of the tasks included in Amendment 6 would be reimbursable from the Highway Bridge Program once we get approval of the cost adjustment. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council?
I have, I have. What was the cultural resource they found?
It's in the creek. It is a bedrock mortar grinding stone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, my understanding is after we got Growlersburg through and cleaned it all up, you could actually see things you couldn't see before.
Which is an interesting artifact of Hangtown Creek. It has been moved everywhere because I'm guessing the local natives did not grind rocks underwater.
I would imagine the creek has moved over time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Are there questions? No? Okay, we will open this for...
I was just going to say, if the public will indulge me, I see three former mayors sitting in the audience. Just one thing I wanted to, if they want, and they certainly don't have to do this, but if they could say the years that they served on the city council, I'm just trying to get a totality of time on this. So just for the sake of conversation.
This project has been going on forever.
Yes.
Okay, 12.1 is open for public comment.
And I've been around forever as well. Marion Washburn, resident of Placerville. I was on Planning Commission for eight years. I was on the city council for 12 years. I was on the historical advisory committee. I helped write the residential, historic residential component of ordinances. I'm not saying the right order, but I helped write the general plan and the safety element. So guess what? You're about to hear some of the detail. What I came for this evening was to kind of clarify how we got here and what was involved in the beginning, what the beginning assumptions were. Why are we here? Where did it come from? As you might recall, some of you might recall, that Clay Street in the past dead-ended at Coleman Street. So it went as far as Coleman Street and stopped. And the area all beyond that was open area. And when I was on the Planning Commission, there was a very, very large housing development proposed. The whole area that's called the Cottonwood area at this point, that included a lot of single-family homes, a large campus of multi-use apartments, low-income apartments, as well as a large block of low-income senior citizen apartments. So as those hearings went forward, several things came up. And one of the things that figured heavily in the discussion was the safety element of the master plan had quite a bit of language about future development needed, all future development needed two viable means of ingress and egress. It did not support our single, kind of funny acquainted, endearing little one-way streets or single-lane streets as viable egress from new development. That was supported by the fire chief at the time, Al Hersig. That was something that was very important as the project, the development was put together. The other one was... Give me a moment here. Did I mention the ma...? Oh, the master plan. The master plan preceded the general plan, and it stated, and I believe this is prior to 85, that...
I'm going to allow more time since Councilmember Saragosa asked you specific questions, too. So go ahead.
Sorry to be overly long. Master plan stated absolutely that Clay Street Bridge would be enlarged because traffic counts were done around that time. And the intersection of Clay Street, existing Clay Street and Main, prior to opening it up, was at a level of Service F for failure at peak hours. So it was recognized even then that there was constriction that upcoming future enlarged traffic couldn't handle. And as we all know, there's certainly more traffic than there used to be. And the trucks and the cars and the emergency vehicles, of course, are far larger and heavier than the Model As and Model Ts that were existent when that bridge was built. So conclusion, it was inadequate for today's vehicles for safety purposes, people trying to get out in case of emergency. The one other item that I think is very important, in the mitigation measures for the cottonwood development, there was a full paragraph about because the improvements would be made to that street and bridge, that individual properties were assessed a certain amount to go to the bridge rebuilding. And they quantified the number of cars, the percentage of cars, and felt that it justified the developer of those lots put forward private money to build that project. And I presume that private money is still sitting in the bank at some point, obviously, building far less than it did when it was first brought up. Anything else? Oh, main point is that city councils at that point had assured the neighborhood down Clay Street, and I mean assured through these various mechanisms that were written into the documents, that those improvements would be built, hence their own lot assessments towards that improvement. But they were assessed, and the residents believed that the city would deliver what they had promised. But now that it's been 25 years or so, the city has not delivered what they had promised. And from my point of view, there's a huge trust issue to be considered that if a city can make reassurances to its existing citizens for upcoming projects and then say, well, couldn't do it. I think trust in local government really takes a gut punch, deservedly. So those people were owed that improvement. They were told that improvement was coming, and it was verified in a number of different ways. If you'll allow me to end on a comedic note. I've been known for quite a long time as the lady who wore tape on her pants to show the height of the current bridge railing.
That's funny. That's a little different take, though, Marion. I like it. Racing stripes.
And I'm tall, so people like me... Well, I think you all know that somebody has fallen over, just fallen over, and you have a picture that I submitted that shows cats walking along the top of the rail on their phone. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none? Oh, we do have more people. Okay. That's how I get them to move.
Just threaten us, and I will finally get up.
Yes.
Sue Rodman. I've lived in Placerville since '89. This bridge is a disaster waiting to happen. And it's been waiting to happen for years and years and years. And I'm just amazed that it's still standing. My daughter went to school at Sonora, and then she transferred up to Humboldt. And then she got a master's degree in engineering, environmental engineering from Colorado State. When she came home for a visit, I said, I've got something I want to show you. And I said, take a look at this bridge. What do you think? And she said, and I quote, and this is going to be a little offensive, she said, that bridge is a piece of shit, and it needs to be replaced. And so we've been waiting for how many years to make that happen? And we need to get the job done.
Good evening, council. Members of mayor, thank you for your time this evening. Mark Acuna, resident and former council member. I began my participation with the bridge with five city engineers ago, in the year 2006. Randy Paces was a city engineer when we first thought about, around about at this location. We know how well that went. I will read my little prepared statement, and a lot of this is just history for folks that weren't around since then and haven't watched the various events that have happened to this project. I share your frustration of the time and money spent on trying to deliver this project, complying with concerns, only to find one more thing added to the task list. Some of these delays are thanks to overzealous claims of historic destruction or the need to examine conditions far removed from Clay Street. Those issues have been quiet here now for a while, but they were very loud and caused some significant delays in years past. Oddly, none of those concerns were shown for the Blair's Lane project, a simple handrail bridge built in the same era, or the Placerville Drive Bridge, a sister bridge to Clay Street with exactly the same historic concrete railing. Those projects move along, and I am confident Placerville Drive will be done in the next two years, probably before Clay Street. And that's very sad. The historic forefathers, being practical Victorians, would be quick to want a new bridge, because a lot has been said about the risks of the historic. And, you know, really, we haven't gotten that far. We haven't seen the final drawings to know what will the actual impacts be. But again, I think our forefathers would have said, "Why wouldn't I want a new bridge, especially when someone else is going to pay me for it?" Okay, one thing regarding the value of the delays for this project, it's allowed us to review this project with new concerns. A couple of days ago, we celebrated the sixth anniversary of the Paradise Fire. Campfire officially known by CAL FIRE and Forest Service destroyed the entire town of Paradise. We have watched since 2006, every year, I'll say the last 10, the impacts from wildfires just devastate communities. In August of this year, a fire burned within two blocks of the hospital in Clear Lake. Nobody heard too much about it, very similar topography to Placerville on one windy day. So, now I think it's very clear that we need a new bridge that can handle today's larger fire equipment and offer, I think, almost more importantly, a proper evacuation route when a wildfire strikes north Placerville. I ask for your support for the project. The community needs to see the proposed designs and the impacts. It's the Clay Street Bridge. I think one of my things has always been, it's the Clay Street Bridge. We're not trying to build some monument. It needs to just serve the neighborhood and those citizens that really need to depend on it daily. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the last of the mayors in the council. I'm Patty Borelli. I'm here to talk about the same thing. I'm... Ditto, ditto, ditto. I spent 16 years on the city council. And I'm not gonna blame the city for everything, because we had some folks that really did a number on us and threw a lot of lawsuits and false statements projected to the public. We had many, many delays. But I just really hope that you'll run with this. We just, I really want to see this happen. I'm still smarting from not accomplishing the roundabout. That whole project was just wonderful, and it would have taken care of this whole thing. But that's in the past, so let's move to the future. I also sit on the fire save committee, and I really, I want to emphasize what Mark just said about the evacuation and how important that that is. That corner is just really a congested mess, even at 5:00 a. n. So, just imagine if we had to evacuate. So, I ask for you to carry on and try to get this thing done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Carter, speaking only as a concerned citizen. My concern with this tonight is just the use of the TIM fees. As I understand it, AB 1600 California Mitigation Fee Act, the city must show a nexus and proportionality between the development paying the fee and the need for the improvement. And then the cost for the improvement should also be proportional to the impact created by new development. I didn't see anything justifying the use of TIM fees in the staff report or in the resolution for tonight's item. I'd like to know from staff, specifically the developments, and I know this is a lot, but the developments that are impacted and their proportionality, and how they came up with this number tonight to use TIM fees, the restricted use, and what we can do with them, and how they came up with that number. And there's also the timing aspect of this. You know, the city is generally required to spend or commit these funds within five years of collection. So, my question tonight is just in regards to the use of the TIM fees for this specific item, how the city's gonna justify that, and still comply with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that was all of the public, we will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Staff, do you have a response to the TIM fees?
Yes. This project has been included in the TIM fee program, I believe, since 1998, maybe even earlier than that. So, the realignment project and the bridge replacement is considered fully eligible for TIM fees.
Great. Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, it is a true statement that, generally speaking, under the mitigation fee act, AB 1600, we do have to expend development impact fees, traffic impact fees, within five years. However, as long as we have a plan in place and demonstrate that there is infrastructure for which we want to use the traffic impact fees for, but we haven't collected the full amount in order to be able to construct it, and we bring back updates to that, to the council, then the fees do not have to be expended. They just have to be basically earmarked for that specific use. So...
Great. Thank you for that legal explanation. City manager?
Just correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, also, that we do expect these funds to be reimbursed in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Through the HBP program?
So, you'll actually get them back.
Great. Okay. We'll bring this back to council for discussion and a motion.
Oh, my God. I have one question. Just curiosity, well, I guess more curiosity, but I know former mayor, former Mary, former mayor Washburn mentioned that, you know, there was assessed fees on the Cottonwood when they were built, at least the first ones, and I guess two and four as well. But are those, are those fees actually sitting somewhere? I would assume at this point they've all been commingled, or...
Whoa, no.
Or is it sitting in some, is it still sitting in the bank account somewhere?
Note to the community, we never commingle funds.
Well, I mean, that are fungible. That are fungible. That's like illegal. That are fungible.
Okay, Mr. Warren?
Good question. So, there was approximately $70,000 of TIM fee money that was initially set aside for the project. That was used as matching funds. The HBP program requires a match, a local match, and those funds have been expended to this point.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would love to see this move forward as quickly as possible. I think this bridge is structurally compromised and a public safety hazard, and we need to replace it as fast as we possibly can. And with that, I will move the item.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarah Gosa?
Excuse me. Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. 12.2. Consider approving a resolution finding that in approving and directing the management, construction, and operational services related to the deployment of fiber optic communications infrastructure and advanced network solutions for the broadband fiber planning project CIP 42340 funded by the California Public Utility Commission for the Last Mile Federal Funding Account Grant Resolution T 17845 in the amount of $20,000, $20,198,943. The city is not required to comply with the competitive bidding requirements of the California Public Contract Code and to ratifying the city's entry into master services agreement with Entry Point Networks Incorporated to provide project management, construction, operational services related to the deployment, and fiber optic communications infrastructure, and advanced networking solutions for CIP 42340. Mr. Morris?
I will take this one on. Mayor No, thank you. At its October 22nd meeting, the city council did, in fact, approve the grant funding award by the state in the amount of approximately $20 million for the broadband project. Contemporaneous with that action, the council authorized staff to enter into and execute agreements for the construction and installation and implementation of the broadband project using the grant funds. Since that time, my office has been working with the city manager's office to review and negotiate the master services agreement for this project. In doing so, I researched whether the competitive bidding requirements were applicable to this project. There is a case that provides an exemption for these types of projects from the competitive bidding process when it is in the best interest of the government agency to forego that in exchange for the unique circumstances or services that are offered here. In this specific instance, the contract contemplates the design, installation, and implementation of a broadband project, which can be distinguished from a typical construction project where you have plans and specifications, and any general contractor can simply carry the design out and build the project. Internet service providers do not typically build a project that a competitor has designed. They have very unique proprietary information, and the entity that designs must also construct it. And so, for these reasons, it would be in the city's best interest to enter into a master services agreement where all of these services are included in one, and the city contracts with one entity. So, tonight you are being asked to adopt a resolution that codifies those findings and reaffirming that staff may complete its negotiations and execute the agreement with Entry Point to effectuate the services for broadband.
Thank you. Questions from council?
May I have my question?
Seeing none, we will open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Just quickly, can I mention that we passed out the agreement tonight. It was actually just today. We did reach agreement on that. There were some provisions, and nothing major, no major changes. It's all in accordance with what we'd been discussing. But I just want to let you know that is available, and there's copies on the back table for the public council.
Great. Thank you.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarah Gosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we will move to 12.3. Consider approval of an agreement with the NBS to conduct a parks impact fee and parkland in lieu fee study CIP 42425 in the amount as not to exceed $26,510, authorizing the city manager, city attorney, and the city clerk to execute the same, and approving a $5,000 budget appropriation from the park development fund for said project. Mr. Nishihara?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Before you tonight is a longstanding opportunity for us to adjust some much-needed support for our maintenance and operations and installation of new amenities for our parks. Before you tonight is, in my staff report outlines, a study that's going to be suggested to be conducted by NBS, who have done work for us in the past. They've also conducted similar studies with the city of Carlsbad, city of Rockland, and, like I said earlier, with us. Early, at the latter part of 2017, the staff presented city council with a preliminary nexus study by SCI Consulting Group in conjunction with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. At that time, for unforeseen nuances, we didn't move forward with that piece. And fast forward to February 2024, we had, the city council had adopted and appropriated $25,000 to conduct this study. Unfortunately, due to some different circumstances, SCI is unable to move forward with that previous contract. And so, tonight before you is a new contract outlining NBS and some of their services that'll be conducted, which includes the Quimby Fee Act as well. The project timeline is estimated to be about 90 days for the first six tasks, which is outlined in the staff report, and about one month or so, depending on the desired amount of stakeholders that we want to involve, for a potential increase in our fee assessment right now with our current impact fees. Once concluded, the staff will make a presentation in regards to their finding, and that's the crux of my report. I'm available if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Do we have questions from the council? No, I'll just give a tiny bit of background because...
Oh, no, go ahead. Your background may answer my question.
Yeah. No, I was just saying, we were talking about, this came forward back when I was on the Park and Rec Commission and came to city council. And I believe city council sent that back to the Park and Rec Commission, and then we had a turnover in staff, and things just didn't get finished. So, I'm excited to see this coming forward and perhaps... What year is finally getting done?
What year did that happen?
Well, it was at least four years ago. Gosh, I think that Wendy Thomas was still on the council at that time, so probably more than six years ago.
Was it when I was on the island the first time?
I can't remember exactly.
I think so, because I sort of remember this, and for the edification of the public, aye. This was, if I remember correctly from this discussion, because after we talked about it this morning, it started to kind of percolate. This was one of those situations where we looked at the fees, we looked what needed to be done, and it was one of those things, well, you know, things have been tough, and we're just starting to come out of it now. And heaven forbid, we raise the fees, because, you know, adding $100 in an impact fee for a park would ruin the half a million dollar house you're about ready to buy. And if I recall, that was the genesis of that, of that sending that back was the council's concern about that. And we did want something back, but then people changed, and it never happened. No, no...
So, here we are.
So, the Park and Rec Commission actually did not not do something. It was, like you said, the staffing thing.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to bring that up, because that's what I do.
Okay, we will open this for public comment.
Bring things up.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
You do it. Move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarah Gosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, 12.4. Consider a resolution adopting the Annex A to the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for the city of Placerville. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Earlier this, actually, starting in last year, November of 2023, Eldreda County contacted the city, actually, they contacted the city of Placerville and the city of South Lake Tahoe, telling them that they were going to update their multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan, and asking if we would like to participate and create this annex as part of that. I told them, yes, we would be interested. And so, they proceeded at that time, and it's taken up till now. That was quite an endeavor to go through the process. They have completed, they completed the actual plan, the multi-jurisdictional plan, including Annex A. We didn't include their copy of the plan here, because it's about, I want to say 400 pages or something like that. But there is a link to that, that you can get to that to read, if you would like to. Annex A is specific to the city of Placerville and outlines different hazards that we could be susceptible to and the mitigation for those. Included in your pack, I think, is maybe one of the most important parts of that, which is Table A10. And it's also in the plan annex, but it's also in the back of your packet. And it refers to the specific hazards that we are susceptible to, the area, you know, how, the likelihood of those happening, how significant it would be, the severity. And then the last column is whether or not it's a priority hazard based on that. I want to point you to, there are four priority hazards that were identified as part of this program. The first is debris flow and landslide, drought, water shortage, and tree mortality, extreme heat, flood, severe weather, and wildfire. So, what are five, six, five... So, what are, five, five, six, five of those, thank you, I think I said four.
Oh, no, no, there are six.
There's, there's six, are there? Okay, six, yes. Anyway, those are the ones that we would, would be priorities for us that we would, going forward, need to look at trying to address some of those. Some of those, I will admit, such as debris flow and landslide, I believe are more, because we've had a lot of storms in the past few years, and we have not really seen much of that. So, I, even though it's listed as a priority, I think there would be minimal amount of things that we would maybe look at doing in terms of those. But obviously, we're trying to do a lot regarding wildfire right now, and we'll continue to do that. Severe weather, flooding, et cetera, those are items that we are aware of. And we can, I, we can do certain things each year, and there may be some long-term things that we can look at that might, might affect us down the road and help us down the road. The other thing that we get by adopting this plan is that as long as we have the plan and we are looking at ways to improve and address these issues, it helps us when we go to FEMA in the case of an emergency and have, hope to get reimbursed for costs we have in an emergency. This makes us eligible to receive those funds. So, those are the reasons that we're bringing this forward to you. The process is, you adopt it tonight, the county will adopt their plan, I believe, in the first part of December, and then they will send it up to the state for final approval. The state has already approved this and gave their initial approval of it. They've looked at it and given this initial approval, but the final approval will come after we adopt, and then the county adopts the full plan. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions I can on this, if you have any. Thanks.
Do we have any questions? I just, I questioned the debris flow and landslide, whether it's likely, since we had, I think, a 360-year storm, and we didn't really seem to have that many landslides or debris flows. Did we really need that to be likely or maybe occasional? Does it really a priority hazard? When we have six, I don't know, the other ones seem a lot more likely. It's my only thought on that.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that. I mean, it, it was, it was based on this map that they provide, that's provided by the, either the state or the federal government, I'm not sure which one provided that one, that shows that there are some areas that show they're highly susceptible to debris flow and landslide. And I think it's primarily because of the steep canyon that we are in. So, it, it makes sense that there, it could happen. I don't, I, I'm open either way to changing that to occasional rather than likely, which would then move it to a, a no, as in terms of priority hazard. At the same time, I'm not sure leaving it as is really affects us a whole lot and anything that we would be required to do. So, it's, it's up to you.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't that, I just like pointing out those things. I'm like, we had these huge, huge storms and.
Yeah, there's, there's generally two factors. So, one is going to be the steepness of our topography and slopes, and then the other is your geology. So, our geology here actually isn't very supportive of landslides, we're mostly bedrock, very shallow to surface, so we don't have overlying clays and fine gray materials, which drives landslides, but we do have very steep slopes. So, just for a little slope stability, geology education.
I just judge it by, does my oak tree fall over every rainy season?
That's right.
Or does it stay in place?
Well, yeah.
And I'm in good hands.
Well, like, and the, my litmus test is the cuts on Highway 50, which are like, whoo-choo, and they never move. I mean, they just like, you know, the little rocks drop out of there every once in a while, but.
Yeah, part of that is the engineering of them.
Well, yeah, yeah, I get that part, well, yeah, that's true. But on the other hand, it's like when you drive up and over on 80, when you go into Vallejo from, from Cordelia, and you just watch the hills move. You know, I mean, they're just like slough, and they, yeah, it's awful. I am worried about the lake tsunami, just a little, in fact, a really little bit. But yeah, lake tsunami.
All right, we'll open this for public comment. No, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council.
Who wants to comment?
Do we have a motion?
I'll move this. I'll second.
Your roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye, thank you. Okay, 13. Council reports from other agencies. El Dorado Transit received and filed its 2324 Administrative Operations Report. Transportation Commission, didn't even have any action items, but we had information items on the regional transportation plan and Camino signage and wayfinding. LAFCO?
We did not meet.
CCOG?
We meet Thursday. We'll be adopting the MTP portion of the MTP SCS, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for federally mandated for our, our region. So, that's the, the freeways and the road part of it. The other part we did earlier was the housing and the greenfield developments. So, that'll be a big milestone as we move to the 2025 blueprint, which will affect every single jurisdiction within the six-county region. And then, like I mentioned before, green means go for Highway 50 is within that, that scope. So, we're in there, doesn't mean that the funding will always appear, but, but we're in the plan, so that's good.
Great, thank you. Pioneer?
Yeah, so, we met just after last council meeting, and we just got an update on our 24, or 25 action plans. Other than that, they just did a review on the presentation that they did here, and it was favorable, so.
Great, thanks. Placerville Fire Safe Council, they have decided on a date for their spring event, which is April 26, 2025, at Midtown Mall, which also will be rise and shine. I let them know, they thought it was okay. Do your rise and shine, then come on over and see what they got going on at their Fire Safe Council event. Opportunity Knox?
We approved some grant funding for Tahoe Coalition of the Homeless, and then we also received a presentation on McKenna Vento, which is like homeless youth in El Dorado County.
Great. Okay, item 14. Requests for future agenda items. Okay, public comment on item 13, there is none, okay. Item 14, requests for future agenda items. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 15. City manager and staff reports. 15.1. Acknowledge and file the HDL Sales Tax and Economic Reports for the quarter end of June 30, 2024. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor No, members of the council. So, this is the report for the second quarter of 2024. Your Bradley Burn Sales Tax or your General Fund Sales Tax, on the cash basis, experienced a $26,409 decrease, or 1.7%, which did include prior period adjustments. When you remove the adjustments, it ends up being a $29,451 decrease, or 1.9%. Not good news, but it's a smaller decrease than past quarters, so it's starting to slow down a little bit. The decrease is primarily due to decreases in autos and transportation, food and drugs, and business and industry. The budget assumption for that quarter was 0.56% increase, pretty modest, or $8,809. So, the actual loss net is $38,260, or 2.46 percentage points. We're not alone, El Dorado County experienced a 0.1% decrease. Sacramento region actually experienced a positive 0.2%, basically zero. Or, in the state, negative 0.7 in total. So, and then we also had our annual results. So, for fiscal year 2324, unfortunately, we had a $435,457 decrease overall, year-over-year, or 6.51%. And then, when you compare year-over-year sales tax, it was $162,220, or 2.5% below 2223. We appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25, and I'm happy to report that Harbor Freight was added and Safelite Auto Class. And then, removed was Les Schwab Tire Center and Office Max, which Office Max closed. So, this does assume, you know, both the Office Max and Rite Aid stores were closed, I mentioned that earlier. Measure H, J, and L performed slightly better in the second quarter. For example, Measure J on the cash basis, slightly down $5,701, or 1.6% with adjustments, prior period adjustments. When you remove the adjustments, it ends up being $4,706, or 1.3%. And the budget, we assumed $826, or 0.23%, so the net swing is about $5,532. And the decrease is primarily due to autos and transportation. We also have the HDL's trends and economic drivers. Overall, the projected sales and economic drivers are slightly more pessimistic, and they also have information for fiscal year 2526 for your information, it's good reading, so. All I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Did our Halloween spirit get replaced by a Christmas spirit?
The store at Office Max. Yeah, so, we're hoping, actually, for the third quarter, we'll receive their return. Be interesting to see how they turn out.
Yeah, but they also run a Christmas or holiday spirit store.
Good.
Are they going to do it?
Yeah, my wife, they were getting ready to switch it. Fantastic, I'm glad to hear that, thank you for mentioning that.
They're, they probably not, elf costumes, oh, oh. Yeah, that sounds, yeah.
Questions from the public? Seeing none? Move on to 15.2. Receive and file October 2024 police report. Chief Wren, do you have anything to highlight for us? No, okay. Any questions from the public? No, okay. 15.3. Receive and file the October Fire Station 25 Run Report. Chief Cordera, do you have anything for us?
No, Madam Mayor.
Questions from the council? No questions from the public? Nope, okay. 15.4. Development Services Department permitting statistics for the month of October 2024. Mr. Rivas? Mr. Rivas, do you have anything for us?
Staff, staff doesn't have anything to add. Basically, it's similar to October the 23rd of last year. Happy to answer any questions, council has any.
You just usually always have something.
He's retired, he's not even supposed to be here.
Okay, questions from the council? None, questions from the public? None, okay. We will move on to 16. Upcoming items, I will let you leave, read that paragraph for yourself. And number 17, at 6:40, we will adjourn this meeting.
Just a reminder, Mayor and everyone, we canceled tonight, November 26.
We canceled the 26 meetings.
Next meeting is December 10.
December 10 will, is the next time we will see you.